Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone here. I'm Kathy Cole, I'm a part of the Women Voters. I am the moderator for this evening. I want to welcome everybody to the forum this evening for the candidates running for City Council. I want to thank Two Rivers City Manager Greg Buckley and his staff for publishing the forum on the electric board and on their website. I also want to thank the Park and Recreation Department for stepping in and allowing us to have a forum here at the Costco Room. This is the second time we're having a forum here in this room, and I appreciate the Park District so very much because of that. I want to thank my members who are here to help me out. The Women Voters Members, Julie Brindi is our timer this evening, and you'll see a lot of her, Jennifer Ballmer made the signs for me. There's a lot of background that people help out with that you don't get to see. For those of you who are at home, this is on YouTube. It won't be on the usual station because we don't have that kind of accessibility here in the Costco Room, but it is going to be on YouTube and it will probably be on the City Council YouTube website. So you'll get a chance to see that. Our League's mission statement is, "The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not endorse one party or one candidate over another. Our mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens and government. League membership is open to all citizens, male or female, from the time you're 16." So students who are in high school can have the opportunity to join League and they would be voting members. That's a punch, but no. Anyway, at this time, I'd like all of you to silence your cellphones or any other electronic device at the time. Banners and water, drinking water, fountain of alcohol. Women's is out the door, but on the side. The women's bathroom there and the medicine closer by. So that's that. Any campaign material is usually outside on the table before you came into the room, and that is part of our state regulations stating that we cannot have any advertisement here inside the forum. The format for the evening is as follows. Each candidate will have an opening statement of no more than two minutes and will respond to questions from the audience. We ask that each candidate keep their responses to questions under a minute, or a minute and a half or ninety seconds, and Julie will show up the signs. Julie, you wanted to show them signs? That's your yellow sign, you've got fifteen on one side, thirty seconds on the other, and definitely the stop sign.
I do like to mention to you gentlemen that when I hold up thirty seconds, thirty seconds, you put in a lot of thought.
Oh, yeah.
So don't panic. And when I hold up the stop sign, please finish your thought.
The sentence.
Or just stop talking, okay? Just so you don't panic and say you can't say another word.
Okay, and at this time, for the audience, Heather will have the microphone, you can raise your hand, and she will bring the mic to you. Those of you who have attended, great decisions, you know, that's the way we do it, and people will ask their questions that way. We ask that you limit your question to thirty seconds long, okay? In other words, I don't need background of why you're asking the question. I simply would like you to ask the question and you have thirty seconds to do it. And again, Julie will time you, and when that stop sign goes on, you finish your sentence. And that's it. So hopefully you'll get to your question. And that's the way we're going to do it. Okay, we have, Bill cannot be here. He's having problems and is not coming this evening. And Jeff Dolphy, I think he had another engagement, so he will not be here. So we're sorry for both of them not coming, but you do what you do, you know? People have problems, you've got to follow what's going on in their lives. All right, we're going to begin. We'll start with Tim, you have a two-minute opening statement. It should be on.
My name is Tim Petrie. I'm running for reelection again so that I can work with council and department heads to try and make the city a place for citizens and keep stuff fair and not overbearing. Kind of simple, just trying to get more hosing in town so that we have a place to have a workforce so that we can probably try and get some manufacturing in that town. So that we can both be tourists but manufacturing so that there's steady work all the time. That's about it.
Pass it to Andre.
Hi, my name is Andre Robitaille. I'm originally from Iron Mountain, Michigan, it's where I grew up. Went to high school in Florence, Wisconsin. Went to military, went to army for four years after that. And after bouncing around after the military for all over the country for a little bit, ended up in Milwaukee. In Milwaukee, that's where I met my wife of sixteen years, that's where my son mostly has grown up. And partway through that, you know, kind of towards the end around COVID era or slightly after, crime had started to creep into even some of the nicer neighborhoods. And, you know, you couldn't really send my son out on a bike because the reckless driving had become so bad. People were driving on the shoulder the whole way at fifty miles an hour when it's twenty-five. And that was an everyday occurrence, so you couldn't really send him out without, you know, worry. There was a weekend where one of the larger parks in the city, about two, three blocks away from our house, where three different women were attacked. And my wife was one of those. And we just kind of decided, okay, that's it, we're off. And after three long years of attempting to find a house, person, man, two walk, but for about two and a half looking for it, Two Rivers, we did find them. We now live over on Jefferson to venture for about a year and a half. And my wife feels safe when she's out walking. My son is absolutely thriving in Two Rivers High School. It's been a pretty good experience in this way. Why I'm running for City Council, though, is after spending a ridiculous amount of hours attending council meetings, watching them, watching all voter forums, you name it. And I've come to believe that there's a pretty big rift between a lot of the residents that live here and the city leadership. I'm hoping to close some of that rift. That is pretty important to me, and that's a lot of why I'm running. There are other aspects, there are issues, but that's about it. Thank you. I might need you to wave it because I didn't see it.
Okay, all set, here we go. Good evening. Thanks all for coming. Thank you to the League of Women for having us here tonight. Thanks to Park and Rec. I wrote some stuff down because I didn't want to forget some important things. So my name is Scott Steckmuster. I'm finishing up my first term on City Council. I've lived in Two Rivers for most of my life, forty-five years. I have an amazing wife, Lisa, of twenty-eight years. And I have two children, Griffin and Carly. Griffin's attending Fox Valley Technical College, and my daughter Carly's attending UWGB, and if she's watching this, she'll see me later because I mentioned her name. I have been employed with a color company for twenty-eight years, and I'm currently a manager in IT department. As to why I want to serve another term on City Council, for me, it's pretty much a simple answer. I'm doing it for the people of Two Rivers. There's no hidden agendas, there's no, I want to do this because this is my personal opinion. It's something that I want to help the people of Two Rivers. Like I said, I've lived here all my life, and it's important that the people of Two Rivers get a good representation on council. They know, hopefully they can know what we're doing is we're doing what we can do best for the city and best for the people that live here. Is it hard? Yes. Is everyone always happy with all the same decisions that council make? No. But that's where we kind of have to try to work together as a council, as citizens, to really try to make it, everything work real well. Over the past three years, I've served on different committees. I've been on the Public Works Committee, advisory rec board, business industrial development, and Board of Review. Second year, surprised by me, I was voted as vice president of the council and this past year is voted in as president. I think the only way to move forward as a city and as the people of Two Rivers is to work together. Not one person in the council has the power to make changes. The entire council working together with city staff can make things better for everyone. It's really a collective and positive voice that make things better. Thank you.
Okay, pass it to Andre. All right, first question. All right, I have a question right here. What do you see as two of the biggest challenges facing Two Rivers presently?
Two, all right, so...
You could sit down, you don't have to stand.
There were people like kind of complaining about these. So, in my mind, there's three, and I'm gonna go with two, but in my mind, there are three. One is, we have obviously a jobs and business attraction situation. If I talk to people and I'm knocking doors, that's what I hear probably the majority of the time from the most amount of people. We have a housing challenge. And that is the crux of the problem. You can't bring in business, you can't get business attracted, you can't get them to expand here if there's nowhere for their people to live or if there's not a trained workforce already. So the housing situation that we have, in my opinion, is a bit of a challenge. We have about seventy-seven, that's the last count that I've heard, of Airbnbs. We have hundreds of vacation homes. Those are fine, you can't stop people from doing those things. But they do take up housing stuff. Every one of those could be a family, kids playing over in the east side. You go over in the east side now at night, it's pitch black, it's dark, there's not a lot of people there. There's not a lot of kids playing out in the yard. The school has half the enrollment at the high school. That's the one I know best because my son's the twice. But they have half the enrollment that they did when they start. Those are challenges that aren't going to be things that we have to solve. The third, and I'll only touch on this briefly, is I think we have a strategy problem. We have a lot of committees that, when I look back at their minutes over the past year, don't do much. It's not that we necessarily have the wrong people. Maybe some are a bad fit, maybe some are a good fit. But the things that are going on in those committees don't seem to be resulting in a lot of action. And those are probably the bigger things that I see as a challenge for me.
Okay, pass it, now, pass it to Tim.
The biggest challenge I see is the hosing. As Andre said, that business won't come here because you can ship a lot if you can't ship a workforce. And if you don't have a workforce, and if someone did want to transplant people here, we have no place for them to go. So they end up living in managed lock, and that wouldn't help our individuals at all.
Pass it to the mic. It's on.
The other thing is, I don't really talk to a lot of people because I'm quite busy. But if anybody asks me anything, I'm right there to let them know what's going on. Anybody can come talk to me whenever. A lot of misinformation, but people that just like hope the better idea.
Talk to it, talk to it.
The social media stuff is a problem because just people just start trouble. They poke everybody in. It just, I don't know, it does more damage to your team, right?
Yeah, so I'm the third person to go aside. My answers might seem similar, but, no, I agree that the hosing is a big thing. There's not enough houses for people to move here and stay here, which is unfortunate. And, you know, the city is kind of, I don't want to say landlocked, but we have Manitowoc to the south and... No, the Wodondones. Wodondones that is down, kind of blocking that way. So it's a challenge to be able to find some housing for people. The other thing I think is the recruiting jobs theory. That's a real hard thing to do. And like Tim said, there's not enough housing to bring jobs here. People say, you know, we live too far away from the interstate, but we have a good industrial park where there's good things that are happening there. There are, you know, that's bringing in some jobs, not a lot, but there's some jobs that are moving there. So we have a good industrial park, I think we could better utilize. But like I said, housing is really important, and I don't know if we can bring manufacturing jobs back. I know cities tried in the past. But, you know, something that, you've got to do something to be able to bring more to the city and let it keep growing and moving forward. You don't want to become a stale city where nothing happens. The city is already doing some great things, and we've just got to be able to keep moving forward and to be able to do what's best for everyone here.
Next question. Heather, we got mine. Let's see if it works again.
Speaking of...
Do you spot some housing?
Mr. Andre.
No, it doesn't go that way, it goes to everybody.
Oh, for everybody. By your observation, why is there no building of buildings? For people?
Like houses?
You mean...
Like houses, houses, why there's no houses for people?
Own, own branch of parties.
Yeah.
What is the wall that stops from building?
And you do get to answer first.
I'm first, right?
Yeah, you are first.
Okay, thank you. No, good question. And, yes, there, I think there's the availability of land nearby for people to be able to build the houses. Yeah, we got Sandy Bay Highlands that are with the new phase three that's starting, but not everyone could afford those lots and could afford to build houses up there. So that's hard for people, but thankfully some people are moving in there, but a lot of people can't. So as a city, we need to be able to find different ways. I know, I don't want to bring this up, but I know when the high school was built, they said, the high school told us that, we'll build a high school here, people will start moving up there. That's hard, that hasn't come to fruition yet. But I think what we really need to do is focus on the north part of the city. That's where most of the land is available right now. And we have to be able to somehow, however that work, come up with money to be able to put infrastructure, except stuff costs a lot of money nowadays with interest rates and everything, how expensive everything is. It would be really hard to pay for that infrastructure. So we've got to be creative some way, somehow. I don't know if we could, you know, maybe go after some of those vacant houses. I know there's some builders in the area that do that, they buy the houses that are just empty and tear them down, build new ones. But I think as a city, city really needs to focus on some creative ways because there's shortages all over the place for housing everywhere, so. Hope that helps.
I would say that Scott pretty much nailed a good chunk of that. You know, the development that we've been able to do has mostly been Sandy Bay Highlands, you know, give or take four hundred fifty thousand dollars a house, which is outside the means of a lot of people. There is a need for those people to have housing too, where you want to have upper-end housing for reasonably affluent people. You want, you know, if you're bringing in an engineer to do the plant, the average salary, I think it's like a hundred eighty-six a few years back. You know, you want those people to be attracted to the city and want to live in a house that's for them. But we've kind of, whether it's us or the developer or both, we've kind of dropped the ball a little bit on rentals, condos, whatever. We've had three potential developments in the time that I've been here. The West River lots look like it's kind of fallen through the lots of our investor. We were supposed to get an update on that in December, but, you know, whether they gain one at the city, I don't know. The stuff that was supposed to go on the old Hamilton lot hasn't started yet. Now have the guy that owns Spices and VP down in Fourteenth, I don't know. He wants to build something in the old Hanson Floral that'll be market rate apart. So some of that stuff is all going to help. But we have a committee, the CDA, that, you know, is kind of acts a bit of the housing authority, where if you look back at one of the economic studies from a few years back, they said, "Go block by block, find the vacant homes and see if the city can help in that area."
The reason why some of the developments in both was the cost of living that developers couldn't afford. Everything went up by over eleven percent, and the prices of materials started to go up by thirty percent, and that hurt real bad because those would have been some nice places on the old Edward's property down by Grover. Yeah, like Scott said, I know not many people can afford to live on Sandy Bay Heights. We need to find someplace to build some kind of market rate, reasonable housing. So it's find a man. If we end up with too much, then rent will come down, actually. And maybe the market will kind of flatten back out. Instead of people wanting something so bad, they'll pay outrageous amounts of money for stuff that they never should have been willing to pay. And then they get upset because everything went up. Sometimes you just have to hold back and wait, yes.
Next question.
I can talk about. I'm Jack Klein, and I, my husband's from Two Rivers, I'm from the St. Louis area. And, you know, been tracking how things are going, not just in this community, but throughout the United States. And there's a lot of talk about manufacturing. Well, there's a lot of states talking about manufacturing because our leaders...
You have thirty seconds, get to your question.
Okay, our leaders sent overseas. So what, do you have any plans on what you're looking for to bring what kind of manufacturing?
All right, it goes to you.
Andre, Tim.
Tim.
No, not really, nothing specific. Because that would make it even harder to try and get someone to come here if you're going to be focused on one certain thing. But as I said, the hosing, to be able to get, to push people up that can work there. I've lost, didn't lose, but I've had two businesses I've been able to run for two years because I can't put any believes. It's terrible.
Pass it to Andre.
As somebody who lost my job to outsourcing, I definitely understand that problem, it's difficult to say that way. Maybe this is unprofessional to say, I can never quite tell, but getting another Hamilton back is, everyone kind of says this, but I don't think it's very comfortable for a lot of people still. We're not getting another Hamilton back, that was a perfect storm of so many things, in a good way. It was an amazing series of events that made that happen. Getting another thousand employee employer is, it would be amazing, but I don't see that as feasible, industrial or otherwise. But getting and attracting smaller, medium-sized, hundred-employee businesses, fifty-employee businesses, and getting a bunch of those, filling up the industrial park, and these are the things that the city is trying to do to some degree now. Those are things where we can feasibly do a little bit more to reach out. The, oh, thirty seconds, this is going to be tough. One of my big issues is the subcommittees that the City Council has. There's some, and I mentioned before, there's some people on that I think are lucky and some people are not. We have a BIDC that is, their job is to attract and retain business and industry to this city. In the last year, full of minutes, they've given a handful of loans and grants. But as far as I can tell, I've never seen City Council or the BIDC put forward the strategy and say, "This is how we're going to attract businesses, here's what we need to execute." That is what I would love to see changed.
That is the one question that kind of I think is one that, you know, it needs to be asked, and it's hard to answer because we don't have enough housing. We don't have anywhere in the city to put manufacturing. No one wants it in their backyard, to be honest. So the OI areas, I think, are the best place to go. And we already have an industrial park, like I said earlier. I think we have to look at different ways, again, being creative. How can we get people to build someplace there? Like Andre said, I don't think we're going to find a thousand employee manufacturer that'll come here. I think that's, I think we all kind of realize that with the reality and the way things are. People are going to build something, big cities, in between Green Bay and Milwaukee, it's harder up here. I know Manitowoc, they have it, but, you know, again, they're right on the interstate, so I think that helps them. For us, I think it's just a matter of, like I said, being creative and trying to get something, trying to get some company or someone to invest in us and the people here to be able to bring those jobs in. It's tough, I mean, it's really hard to be able to get that investment to come here, but we're starting to see a couple businesses pop up in the industrial park, which is good. It's just we need, there are a couple employees here and there, and that's great. But I think we need to figure out a way to be able to bring more bigger companies and more people.
Next question.
So I'm actually asking a question that I care about, but it's actually from someone else that lives in town. One of the questions is about, so we've been talking a lot about the Airbnbs, but what a, you know, how they do actually hook people living and working here. For instance, Neil J... For instance, Neil Jager wanted me to ask, who is in favor of raising the minimum usage fee? Because if you think about it, all these homes sit empty for nine months of the year. They're only vacation homes for three months, so that puts a lot of pressure on the people who live and work here. Is there any way, like, you know, how you have a lottery, you have a lottery credit if you own your home in the state of Wisconsin if used as a rental property?
To your question, please.
Is, is what, how, how is your feeling on the usage fee increase for maybe vacation homes? So that they take up some of the, the burden that's on the people that live and work here?
No, Andrea, first. Andrea, first.
Okay. So just to explain this, every time this has come up with people that I've talked to, they struggle. I get to use it my time, so these guys, so it's a bonus. But the minimum usage fee, uh, or whatever it is that's on your utility bill is not additive. It's not what you use plus that. It's a threshold. If you have less usage than that threshold, then you pay the minimum. If you're over, if you use way more than that threshold, then you pay over. You don't get the minimum usage fee re-added to it. So I just wanted to throw that out there, cause that has come up a lot in that topic. There's been discussions numerous times. Um, I brought it up as a potential thing we should look at. I know that Councilperson Wawowski has brought it up on a couple of times. And even the city manager said, yeah, you know, maybe that's something that we should look at. But it never really goes anywhere. The concept basically is these houses that sit empty a lot of times. And I would say it's kind of a hypothesis, theory, we need to data to check it. But these houses that sit empty aren't really paying their fair share of the infrastructure that everybody else pays. So their houses sit empty and the rest of us full-time residents pay this higher, kind of higher, higher utility bill the rest of the time. The idea would be, well, raise it up a little bit, that threshold, which would in theory bring down some of what full-time residents pay the rest of the year. And just bring it a little bit higher on things like vacation homes that are only occupied for three months or so.
Well, actually, the minimum, minimum fee is not bad at all. I've been trying to work to get that changed to the minimum fee instead of the minimum usage because people complain because they go over the minimum usage and then you should be charged that. It's actually a one year. And I helped push it, I provided you up instead of the rates to go up when we had the, I reviewed the sewage plant, that so that the people that aren't here all the time pay every month and it's not the citizens that are using water. That's some of the things I've been working on now. But yeah, it's actually a one on. Only for us, they don't have that.
Yes, it is Scott.
Um, yeah, no, I think I'd be okay with that. Um, that didn't be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I was just kidding. Um, no, I think I'd be okay with that. Obviously, I don't want it to be so high that we drive the people away. It'd be like, why am I paying a hundred dollars? I'm not even there. But I think there, there's gotta be some kind of sweet spot in there where, to be fair to everyone, you know, to everyone that does, would have that. But I could see where that probably helped with our utility bills, water bills, stuff like that. I could, I would be in support of something like that to be able to take the burden off taxpayers. For those type of rental houses, Airbnb's, stuff like that. Yeah, I could see something like that happening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next question.
Um, I am hearing a lot of negativity here. I wanna hear some positive things about Two Rivers. I want you to tell me three positive things about Two Rivers. Cause I love Two Rivers. I've lived here my whole life and I could give you twice or more. I wanna hear from you.
Scott, you're first.
You're first.
Question.
Thank you. Excellent question. Yes, I hate focusing on the negative. There's a lot of cool stuff that goes on here, uh, in the city. We have a really awesome park in the Little Turgers. Um, there are people that, that actually care about the city. They don't, there are a lot of people out there that, yeah, they see the negative stuff and they just, they don't, they don't care for it. But yeah, we have, we have some new restaurants coming in. There's, like I said, Central Park is a great place. We have an almost amazing arts and rec department. Anywhere, I would put our arts and rec department up against any other city in the area. Um, we have a good public works department. I know our utility, people complain about utilities and taxes, stuff like that too. But, sorry, that was negative. Um, but, you know, sometimes some of these, we have to pay for stuff and it sucks. It really does. But it's, there's so much good stuff. We have an awesome beach. I love going to the beach. I know people raise up things. It's, it's so busy there and stuff like that. I get that too. I, I fairly enjoy the new beach, as we call it, that's over closer to the coast guard. But yeah, when someone starts asking about good things about Two Rivers, that, that's what really gets me pumped up. It gets me excited because there's a lot of really good things that are happening in the city. Like I said, parks and rec, the, the music in the parks, uh, the activities down at the beach. There's just so much to do, not just in summertime, but there are stuff to do in winter too. And it's not just, um, sitting here all set.
This is a tough one for me because I am a troubleshooter, problem solver by trade. Um, and I'm a pessimist and a skeptic, but I'll do my best. I like finding stuff and trying to fix it, but, um, a big reason why this was on the list of places for us to move to when we were looking is my wife really loves being close to the lake so that when she goes walking every day, she walks, she walks down the beach pretty much every day. It is one of the most important things for, for me. I've always dreamt my whole life of living on river, always. Like this, that to me is, I can go to the lake a hundred times and she doesn't like this part, but I don't care. It's not my thing. But being by the river, it's just, I love it so much. I don't know if that counts as, that's like one and a half, so I'm gonna give another half. Uh, I really love the forest. Being able to walk through the forest for me is absolutely incredible. And my wife's even turned to it at this point and realized how incredible that is to be up there. And the most important thing for me personally is I'm kind of bookish at times. I love the historical society, but part of why I love it is because the history of Two Rivers to me is my favorite part. Being able to read about how like, being able to read about all the things that happened. Being able to read about this crazy series of events that created what Hamilton became. Blow me away. So those I would say are my three-ish things.
Nature is one of the probably best thing here, but, and Two Rivers is so small. You can walk to anywhere you wanna go. And it's, it's decent neighborhoods. People are pretty much always friendly. But our, our sunsets and our sunrises, especially in the wintertime, all over the icebergs and stuff. That's, someone could make a lot of money selling fishes and that. And the woods, I ran through all them as a kid and it's, it's just nice to, you know, get in, in the nature and we're surrounded by it. We should take care of it. We're overboard, but slow down, take a look around, relax a little.
You guys forgot my library.
We have a nominal library.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay. The next question, please.
Um, everybody's mentioned the beaches being a main draw to this area and it absolutely is. And I'm wondering how, how can we keep it user-friendly? And I guess the main thing in my mind is let's not charge for parking at the beach. I hope we never do, but what are your thoughts on charging parking at the beach?
Tim, I think you start first.
Well, it's got its pluses and it's got its negatives. Our beach isn't the only one that we should try and get more in touch with. If we could get more interaction from people at Point Beach to hear times have changed. They don't, they don't go camping and bring a, a little jeep behind them anymore. Now they got side-by-sides and stuff. They don't use golf carts because they're slow or not as safe as the other. If, if we could get the state forest, put, um, the people from up there coming to town to spend money, I think that would be a really good thing for our community.
Do you not think the people that come here in the summer are spending money?
Oh, I didn't say that. Uh, they're, they're spending money too, but I, we're just missing out on the ones that are up there. Cause it, we don't have a very, we don't have a big welcome sign that says, hey, everybody from Point Beach come here because the, what is that, uh, shuffles?
Shovels.
Yeah, that's a beautiful place. There's a, the people that have campers there and they got side-by-sides, they can't get into town. Go to dinner somewhere or something.
Should we or is that discovered? Scott's gonna be able to beat me on this one because he's part of the ARB, but, um, I'll try not to step in it. So I'm not from here, right? I've been here for a year and a half. I've not lived here my whole life. I have to count on what people that have lived here, that raised their families here, that are generation or locals, well, you name it. I have to count on what they say. And it's very significant. I would say if, if the beach comes up as a topic, um, ninety percent of the people roughly say they don't feel that the beach is for them anymore as residents. They do feel that it has become overrun on busy weekends. That other ten percent says the opposite, says it's kind of, well, you know, that's like two or three weekends a year. But there are issues that people have with parking. They would like to see residents be able to get free pass and then we, we charge some nominal amount for parking for tourists. I, you know, that is one of those things where I think you have to survey the people out there and see what people are really looking for. But I think that we are possibly about to be here. So what's going on?
So the question was, should we be paying parking at the beach, right? That's the question. Okay, so, um, for residents, ab- absolutely not. I have no way residents pay for the beach. Paying for people that coming out of town, that's a hot topic. Um, and I know, like Andre said, uh, arts and rec is looking at that. My personal opinion is, I would say, um, my personal opinion is no, I wouldn't charge for parking at the beach. If enough people came to me and said, Scott, I think we really need to have parking at the beach. Okay, then I would listen to the people and say, yeah, I think maybe that, maybe that is a good idea. Me personally, not in the council saying, I don't think we need to charge people for, for parking at the beach. It'd be really hard, difficult to do that. There would be a lot of technology we'd have to get staffing to be able to do pay for parking stickers like they do at Point Beach for the residents. Maybe my mind will change in the future and I try not to walk back and forth, but for me personally, at this point, I would say, I don't, I wouldn't support it. Thank you. Can I finish? I know I have, do I have a few seconds left? And was I done? Okay. You were getting ready. Okay, thank you.
Next question. Way in the back, okay.
Everyone, thank you for willing to serve the council. It takes a lot of courage and I'm sure it's a good thing we've done. Second, the future vision of Two Rivers in your view. Is there another city that you've studied, that you've visited, that would serve as your role model as a vision for the future of Two Rivers?
No. No, there is not. Um, there, it depends on what happens, I think, um, with the next, let's say, three years. I think that that is what, that's how you're gonna tell the difference of what's gonna happen. Are, do we start to see some small and mid-sized employers start to show up? Do we take this shift into, well, tourism just exploded and now that's a thing? Do we just fall off and become a retirement community where, you know, once you're out of high school, you bail cause there's nothing to do, nowhere to work and you can't afford to live here? I don't know the answer to that. I think that from the things that I've seen in our comprehensive plan, from the things that I've seen us execute in some of the strategies with the economic studies that we have, and just general interest of what people ask for, uh, when I talk to residents, I think we'll start to get a feel for what some of those things are, but it feels like we've got a few years of trying out some things and kind of coming up with a strategy for it. What do we wanna try to accomplish? If it becomes a, we wanna bring in weekend day trip tourists, sea divert, climate, those to me are, are probably the ways to go. If it came down to, we're trying to bring in industry, um, I looked somewhere much larger, but like I would fit to something like, uh, New Berlin, down by Milwaukee, that has made an absolute turnaround just based on a massive industrial park. So it really depends to me, um, how these next three years go.
Yeah, I've not looked at other cities to try and pick apart what they're doing. One thing that makes me nervous is the hedge funds that have been buying up small mom and pop businesses, getting the rates to use their names and then just jacking rates up high on everybody. I don't know if there's a way to keep them from buying up all of single homes in Two Rivers, but as I get like three phone calls and two letters a week asking, well, if I have any property that I wanna sell, and I tell them, no, and I hang up on them. Hopefully that trend ends. And, or people don't sell to them. That, that might be the only other thing you can do is just not sell to them. So that we can keep this, our community and actually have I think that the hedge funds are worse than any Airbnb. Because they aren't people at all. Compared to, it's corporation and it counts as a person, but it's not. It's just deep pockets, look in the village, everything. I'm hoping it, that it future gets brighter, but please don't tell them.
There you go. Okay, um.
Scott?
Yes.
We're gonna trade that out.
No, I'm okay, no. Okay. So maybe. Okay, that's a little bit better. Um, thanks for letting me on the first one, also having that microphone.
You're welcome.
Um, so yes, excellent question. The, I lost my train of thought with my iPhone now. First off, Two Rivers is number one, um, to me, and always will be, no doubt. That's why I've been living here forty-five years. Um, that's why we started a family here and that's why my kids are still here and I'm pretty sure they're gonna stick around, fingers crossed. There are things that can be improved in the city, absolutely. There, you know, we talked about manufacturing and businesses and stuff like that. It, as you look around in other areas, um, different cities, different communities, one that kind of sticks out to me is Sheboyden Falls. I have some friends that live there. I work five minutes away from it. So that, to me, if I'm gonna compare two cities, that's how I visit. I see Two Rivers obviously a thousand times better. But Sheboyden Falls also has that unique downtown road that goes through the middle downtown, the older buildings, stuff like that. They have a little more manufacturing within the city, which I think would be cool to have here too. But yeah, to answer your question, I think it's Sheboyden Falls. They have the nice river with the falls through there and the nature and stuff like that too, so. Yeah, that's how I kind of look at it. But again, Two Rivers is number one.
Next question.
Great. I'm wondering if the council, the city overall, has been addressing life issues like light areas and light housing. Street we live on, we have members who think we really need our properties nice. And then we have others who don't seem to care at all. And we worry about our property. And we worry about our property values, plus we just don't wanna look at that. We want to, you know, we bought our houses, we we worked to keep them nice. So I wonder if the council and the city overall. Talks about light ever and how they're addressing it.
I'm sorry, I keep losing track. Who goes?
Yeah, I'm I'm keeping track.
Okay, thank you. Um yes, lighted properties, there's there's a problem. Definitely. Um yes, and I I'm one of those people too that I like to keep my yard nice and if someone nearby, it's like. I can't just, and I know everyone's busy and and everyone has other stuff going on, but lighted properties, those to me are are ones that are just rundown, they're falling apart. Um stuff like that. I think they're, I don't think, I know the best way to to take care of that. Um and the city is, the city is trying. Um I won't name particular properties that the city has gone after, but it takes it takes so long to be able to. Get somewhere to be able to do something about it. Um you have to go through, get the right different tickets and citations. I know I'm way off course. On what really happens, but then it's gotta go to court and then it's all this and that and it it just takes a long time. I I'm hoping, you know, sometime that we can just. I don't know, the city can come up with something that can just say. This would be bad, but that's a way to help. We're gonna take it over and do something about it. Um we do have an officer that goes out um that can start the process. So if there's something that bothers you or something that, just call the emergency police department line. And I know this is really a candidate forum, not a city type thing, but um they'll be able to help. They'll be able to get the ball rolling. It's it's a problem in the city. Um you can go down a lot of different streets and then see different things and. Hopefully we can get some of that taken care of.
The worst part about this question is that I have Mr. Buckley in my eyeliner right now. I'm looking at you, so if I say anything, if I miss stuff. If not, hi. Um so. We have a subcommittee um that is specifically, they're specifically tasked with dealing with light and affordable housing. Um it is for a reason I don't know. Um also the, with one one person exception, the exact same as the. B I B C, which is meant to attract business. Those feel a little different to me, um but they have enough overlap that they carry the same meetings and have the same person. Um but I've heard many, in including myself, that, you know, we have that issue on our street. I live on Jefferson. And there are parts of Jefferson that I look around like, what is going on? Um and I don't want to have to call all the time. First of all, it feels bad. You know, I'm sitting there taking pictures of the old stuff and then sending it to the police. That's not a very appealing. Um but when I talk to Chief Martin about that, you know, that could what what Scott says. It's a long process. Um you cite them, you warn them, you cite them, they clean up a little bit, happens again over and over, and then it goes to court over and over. So I'm down to about fifteen seconds, wrapping back around to what I said. We have a committee that's supposed to be dealing with these things. I haven't heard too often, only one time through Mr. Bittner. About St. Mark. I've only heard light come up one time. I think the council should be asking these committees, what's your strategy? And how are you gonna execute it and how can we help?
There are a lot of properties that need fixing. Fixing up. Um I know of a person who was buying quite a bit for needing his window trim and painting. Um so people do get ticketed for that. Um depending on what the what the issue is, you could always ask the neighbor if they need a hand with something. You know, a little bit goes a long way. I've got a neighbor that said, do you mind if I cut your grass? When I cut mine, oh, go right ahead. I'd like to pay you to do it, because that way it all looks similar and by the time I get done working. I'm all the lights on, trying to get your grass covered. That property is, it's. Um. The big thing is that I can ask someone if they need a hand. Because you never know, there there is probably a good reason why something's not getting fixed. I've been waiting for three years to get a rug. And I paid for it already. It's was, yeah, it. It's hard to find help. It's that bad.
So do you think our downtown Main Street is healthy and successful? And if not, what would you do to change that?
Well, um. It could do a bit. It probably needs a little help. A little shot of something new in there would probably help it a little bit. Um. If people, if, as long as they're open-minded and let people's ideas flourish, I think it'll. Um it'll blossom. But yeah, right now there are some spots that look a little little mangy here and there. Um but. Just be open-minded. Don't try and restrict people. Or if if they don't understand what I'm trying to get at. But people always are negative towards people that wanna try something new. Let them try, you know, could be the next specimen.
Not sure how to answer this question. I'll be honest with you. Um I've been openly critical, as you can expect, I suppose, at this point, um but I've been openly critical of um. The Main Street Board and the work that it's done. Um. I think that there needs to be a lot more marketing for, you know, social media, for those sorts of things. I need. I think there needs to be a lot more inclusion of things that are. Um a little outside the norm for us, you know, and if you went to the town hall, you heard the town hall, you heard about somebody who's sitting a block off of Washington. You can't get any attention. Um if I talk about, you know, if I talk to the owner of, say, the arcade. Uh they kind of just don't want to do some of these activities and events sometimes because it's just not, it it's not bringing them what they feel like they need. So I I don't know the answer to how to straighten out. Main Street Board, how to deal with the bid that funds some of these things, how to deal with the events and all the fundraising. I don't have the answer to that. Um but I do see that it doesn't seem to be drawing what I would expect it to be drawing. Um I do see that when I look at the fronts of some of the buildings, I would expect them to be a little bit. Um nicer looking if we wanna, say, attract tourists or have a point downtown. I think there are things that we can do ahead of time. Um to address some of the things that. Um are issues with zoning and ordinances and things like that, but I think there's a lot to be done. Um and I don't know how to answer it in two minutes.
Did it click? Sorry. Um in three seconds, okay, here we go. Um. Okay, no, um. Yes, I think we could probably do more downtown. Um I know the city has been doing, and I know Main Street has been doing some beside grants. For outside the buildings to make them look nicer, that type of thing. It's hard for those businesses to be able to do anything. Um we have Manitowoc with Walmart, you go to Green Bay, you have Target and Walmart and Sam's Club and Costco. It's really hard for those businesses to be able to to do anything in in downtown when there's not a lot of people, which again goes back to housing, et cetera, et cetera. I would go back that way. But I think, you know, can Main Street do more? Probably, and I know they probably do that. I know Jason's here. Sorry, Jason, I don't mean to punch you all like that, but um. Yeah, I think Main Street probably could do. I think they've been doing a good job. I think they could.
The question was, sorry, do you believe that our Main Street downtown is healthy and successful? I mean, I wanted y'all to answer the question on that. The next question was, what would you do as a candidate? Buying for this seat on the council, what would you do to change that? And all three of y'all are skirting around and pointing at people everywhere else. We wanna hear what you as the candidate is going to do. We don't want to hear about anybody else. We wanna hear about what you want.
Gotcha.
So let's, can we, can we rewind this? Start over again? First one, first one, did you ask you a question? Second one is what do what do you do?
Yeah, you don't need to go first. Okay. Okay, so can you repeat the first question, please?
Do you believe our downtown Main Street is healthy and successful?
Yes.
Okay, next.
Next question, that's the next person.
That's it, that's it, go for it.
Uh no, not especially.
So what would you do to change it?
Again, you're back to the B I B C, which is not.
No, no, no.
Rob, chill.
You're in, you're in.
Rob, chill out. Rob, chill out. You gotta let me answer the question. I don't have to have a plan. The B I B C is a subcommittee of city council. They report to as advisory and strategy and all those sorts of things to city council. They're a function of the city and the city council. So it's not pointing to thing. There's a group of people that you're trying to put together with the expertise, with the resume, and some of them have it. To come and say, okay, well, what can we do? So those are things that are a reasonable thing to say. If I say, parts of it are all right. Parts of it need some work. What can we do? How can we attract different people? How can we develop the kitty corner or, you know, human market speedway? How can we deal with those things? Those are things the city council can help with, but we have a subcommittee specifically for that. That we need to ask, because they're the experts, not necessarily the people on city council.
I think the downtown needs a little bit of help. Um thinking out of the box, if. Two Rivers allowed um side by sides in town, that could open up a whole new market for businesses in town and. I've watched other communities where they've made extra millions by letting in. Um Wisconsin Dells allows.
Are you talking about the big cars that expand?
No, 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 no. What they've told behind them, um.
Looks like a little car, like a little off-road car.
Yeah.
Like still, yeah.
Heard of, just heard of.
Well, like a golf cart, but more off-road.
Oh, for my first.
U T Vs.
Oh, U T V, you want them to come in town and fly around?
So they will come into town so that they can come buy groceries or come get something to eat and.
Instead of using their car?
They they're pulling behind their home zero, but by part of the system. I'm just saying, um it's a possibility. Otherwise, that opens up a whole new market of people that can. What's that? Yeah, if they bring in. I. I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying if we should look at stuff like that. Different things are getting involved.
Um I have a question. I know we wanna bring in um. Come factories and that sort of thing, but have you put it out there to attract artists and and to have? People like that come downtown and put shops in and and make it more like Cedarburg or where where people. Are like, wow, this is, because we do have a tourist community here. And I'm I'm not from here. I'm in Newport and but it's um it would it would be nice. I mean, and I do like downtown and I like the quirky little shops, but but be more, I don't know, I don't wanna say polished, but. More, more. Does that make sense? All right, I'm ready to go first.
Visual art is not my forte. I'm not gonna be good at this one. So you you're gonna have me stumped here in a second. Um. I don't know that the city council necessarily has. Trying to attract or necessarily use the incubators that we have to um go out and solicit and find artists. Um but as a, you know, you do see things like E K Blues show up. Um you do have actually friends of mine who run, you know, crafting classes and things like that. You see Cool City Brewery. Um hosting, I don't know, like painting stones and stuff like that and have a drink or all those sorts of things. So there is those sorts of things. You see. Um geez, I can't, I I can't remember if it's Parks and Rec or Explore Two Rivers, but you see like, okay, well, we're gonna have people do the yarn. The yarn bombing and and that sort of thing. So. It makes you, damn, Main Street's doing great. Thank you, Jason. Um so you have some, you have Main Street going out, which is a nonprofit. Um going out and trying to attract that sort of thing too. Do, you know, is it an aspect of tourism that? You would necessarily bring in to kind of bring the money back into the community? I I don't know the answer to that. Uh but it's certainly. It's certainly something that I see parts of the community doing. I don't know that city council or something like the B I B C or. Or any part of subcommittees would be looking at doing something like that.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Um. I know there's, in the past, there's been different shops that have tried to do that, you know, stuff like that. Um my daughter loves doing. Promised her I won't say anything about her. I did, um she likes doing those painting um things. It'll be in Manitowoc. She has one Manitowoc for those. Um where you paint things, she goes there with with her aunt and stuff, and then you do different painting and different crafting things um there. I think that would be something cool that'd be down, you know, downtown, something different um to be able to bring that in. The problem with, you know, some things being not being developed or whatever, isn't really much of the C D A or the the boards, well. We don't have a community development director right now, and that's what's really hurting us. Um I know Greg's trying as as hard as he can to fill in that role. But it's hard for him to do that and be a city manager. And it's really hard to find someone that will come into town, live here and be able to. Um help develop, help bring things in for us to do. So, you know, that's that's been a challenge for us for the past year or two, um I think. But back to your your original question is, yeah, I think. Downtown can, it doesn't always have to be a store. It doesn't have to be a shop. It could be something like you said, artsy. Um you could have something like uh bands come in and play in there and.
A coffee shop.
A coffee shop, yeah.
I I don't mean, I don't mean, I don't mean one of the coffee shops, but like where you have music, music and then it's me and.
Yeah, right. Yeah, a little, yeah, something for people to do it and maybe for something like that.
And, you know, you don't always wanna go to a bar and and listen to music. Maybe you just wanna go to a place that will have. So, okay, question. I'm sorry. Um let's guess in our.
Um have you ever been to the Wood Temple Museum?
I have.
Uh because they come when they have their events and there's a lot of talented people that love coming here from all over the world. From the Wood Temple Museum?
Yeah, it's a museum.
Do you have that people come from Germany? Multiple years and stop in and they love it here and I don't. I don't know what we could do to. Like you said, to get somebody to move here or something, I don't know, but then if we find somebody to display something, maybe, I don't. But when you said that, I just thought, well, you kind of got that. They're good at it.
Yes, they are. They're very, and I I'm not, I'm not being negative. I I do think it's like. I live here, I mean, this is where I chose, but it's it's, you know, it would be. Okay, that's.
And then it says these kinds of classes.
Yes.
So then it's.
Great. Okay, next question, and it's back to you first. Mark?
My name's Mark Bitter. Full disclosure, I am on City Council Friday. My wife and I have been here about twenty years, very fifty years. I've lived in twelve hundred cities around the United States. And I gotta tell you, Two Rivers is outstanding. It's a great, safe place to live. It's got so much positive going for it. And what frustrates me the most is how do we get that out because we have no effective means of communicating the truth? We don't have a newspaper, we don't have a radio station, we've got a couple of social media that bang off the wall sometimes. How do we improve true communication about the positive things that's happening in Two Rivers? Because I believe our future's built on us.
Thank you, Mark. Um yes, um. That was in my notes, one thing about is communication. So I'm not, communicating to the public is is hard to do. Um and that, it bothers me when there's false information that goes out there, um things that aren't true. Um things that, you know, negativity about the city, anything like that, that bothers me. things that, you know, negativity about the city, anything like that, that bothers me personally and as a councilman. Um, it's unfortunate, but I don't know how we communicate better. Um, in the old days, like, like you said, sorry, not the old days. I want to date myself or anyone else. Years ago, um, we had newspapers that were good and you could read them and you wouldn't know what's going on. Um, you could watch, you know, or you could get, um, like I said, yeah, newspapers, stuff like that, stuff would come in the mail, et cetera, et cetera. City is trying to do some things better. There's always that, um, insert in your pamphlet for utility bills. That's a way to communicate. Facebook is a good way to communicate. Not everyone uses Facebook. Um, so that's hard to do. Not everyone uses the internet to be able to check the news. So that's a tough thing and that's, you know, something I think the city, um, needs to take a look at. How do we communicate better? Um, how do we get things out? Um, when we ran the, um, listening session, um, there was a lot of good interaction and I think that's a good first step. Um, because we are able to answer a lot of questions about what's going on and I think a lot of people like that. It helped for them to understand things. So yes, I think we need, we need a better way to communicate.
So not to be flippant, but you three are on the council. I, I, if, if you guys are struggling to figure out how to, uh, actually communicate, then, then that's gonna be a challenge. Though it's not necessarily the most positive place to go, um, that is part of why I started Two Rivers Matters, uh, Facebook group and I decided on that is that, you know, I give you the example, regardless of what you think of Mayor Nichols, um, at the end of the council meeting, um, or, or that week, Justin Nichols will do a big giant Facebook post on, this is what happened after me. I try to do the same thing because communication with the residents is pretty important. That's why when we did the petition, we pushed for what I call town hall of listening sessions. I was told no one will go. Sixty people, not all fans of mine, so I managed to bring them all, but sixty people showed up. So the, the community is interesting. Now, how do you put out the positive stuff? How do you put out the good stuff? Um, that's what Explore Two Rivers is supposed to be doing. That is, I mean, that pretty good, right? And we, I don't even know that we finished the contract with them. Um, but, but that's where we're supposed to be putting room tax out. We're supposed to be using things like that, um, to, to put out the good information. Um, I look to what, um, you know, what Man at Work's currently doing with things like TikToks. I'm not on TikTok, nor do I want to be, but I've caught one of their videos once of going to a diner. And at the end of it, I kind of wanted to go to the diner and Man at Work. It was like, there are some things that we can do that are a little more modern. As much as I miss newspapers as well, um, that's not an option for us either.
Well, I'm quite busy and I, being on council, I suppose we could go, um, like stand on the corner and yell what all happened, or it'd be a lot easier if people just asked us. And if they ask us, we can tell you what happened or try and give you the right information and then we could help spread the word positively and cheerfully and I, like I said, I'm willing to talk to anybody. It just catching me sitting still isn't easy to say. Um, I had also thought about putting a comment box on front of my business that, that's locked, but I don't know if there's legalities to that or not. I don't know. They've got pools that you can't use, so. That you never know.
What is your business?
Um, I own berserkers, a tavern, but for a single item, if I, if I'm allowed to have it, then just drop it open and lock it.
Okay, I'm getting, um, seven forty. I think we'll have time for one more question. Okay. Anybody? Okay, question. You talked about, I mean, the best advertising is word of mouth, right? So you have people coming into the community, take advantage of it. If you want to come down from where they have their parking or the rock canal that, uh, thank you. Point P, maybe get a shuttle. Were you, yes, I appreciate that. Get a shuttle and bring them in. Um, Hallmark movies are big things, right? Do you have a question? Yes. Why can't we create an atmosphere in Two Rivers as pretty much naturally here that reflects what people like seeing like on Hallmark, Hallmark movie?
Uh, another question is, talk to other towns, towns we lived in or a city. Uh, there was one with the downtown where people were being, too many people were being in a house. So I went and talked to other cities who had similar problems. The question is, can't you check with other people and see what they did? Because they, that's what this city did. They checked with other communities. They had the same problem. They solved the problem. And then they did what they did and solved the problem.
You guys got that question? Noah's Ark, yeah, so.
We start. We start.
Um, uh, Tim, if you are.
I agree that we could ask other communities how, what worked for them to try and, um, change their, uh, um, what people saw them as, maybe I, if that's, or if we feel like Jim Luchman, it's my own weight, then be happy. And some people get angry at them and I just go, easy. Honestly, loving, caring person and it just, I don't know. It's probably a good word that way.
So I think there's two where they're, or they're connected. So I'm gonna take a segue at it and you just give me some dots if I'm in the right direction. Um, while I'm critical of city council members as not being prepared enough when they show up to meetings, not researching other cities and what they might be doing before they show up to meetings, um, and not debating frankly amongst themselves. Um, I think once a path is chosen and they say, well, like, maybe we should do something like this, I think that the city, um, Mr. Buckley staff, for instance, I think that they do a pretty decent job of going out and saying, okay, well, city council asks us to take a look at this. So we're gonna go actually do some research and see what we can find that other cities are doing. Um, so I think to some degree that aspect of your question, I would prefer that the city council members themselves, before they roll into a meeting, have done some of that on their own to help you debate, because I don't think you can otherwise. Um, but to some degree, I think that is happening. Um, the earlier part of the question, um, there, it's funny, there was, there was a study from twenty seventeen, economic study, twenty seventeen improved in twenty eighteen by council. That said almost that exact thing, kind of. Um, it was find the people that love this place. Give them a button that says, ask me about this place and so on. Give them materials so that when they run into somebody in one of our festivals or there somewhere else, that they're ready to go send them and it'll boost the places. I thought that was a really cool idea. And maybe something that if we haven't tried, um, yet, uh, we might offer.
Sorry, I don't need to pause for dramatic, I'm just trying to think this through. Um, yes, I think, I think you had a really good idea about, um, sorry, uh, about, you know, shuttles and, and doing that type of thing. Um, I think, again, it kind of goes back to communication. It's just not a good way to communicate nowadays. But I think what the city can do more is maybe doing more surveys to the public. Um, and Parks and Rec, they sent out different surveys. Um, we're doing something now for the city manager. What do people think? Um, I think we need more of that. Um, right now, they're, you know, the council members, I know I go out and I talk to people. I run into people, talk to people, ask them. Sometimes you don't want to talk city stuff, sometimes I don't want to talk city stuff, whatever. Um, so we collect a lot of information that way, but I think it's also, I think we need to do, maybe do more surveys that are included with utility bills. And it can be something you send back in, here's your thoughts, how can we make Two Rivers more like a Hallmark movie? Like what you had asked. How, what are your thoughts on that? Um, because it, it's hard to get everyone's opinion. We can, Tim can talk to, you know, people and then Andre can talk to you, I can talk to different people. We all are talking to different groups of people. We're not all talking to every single person in the city. So it's really hard to get an overall consensus of what the city thinks. We have to go on what we believe in because we're, we're being elected to represent the city the best way that we can do it. And we're, you guys that vote for whoever you vote for, you're entrusting us to do what's right. And that's one part of it, but yes, also maybe survey would be good too.
Alright, at this point, we're at quarter to eight. Uh, we're gonna have closing statements. You each have two minutes to close. Um, uh, Andre, you are next to go first.
It's been, you've been here a while. I can't quite remember everything I've said, so if I repeat myself, I apologize. Um, yeah, my name is Andre Robeta. I managed to draw first on the ballot, so I used to be the top choice. You don't have to remember my name, just top one. That's it. I am, I am running for a very specific reason. It is driven why I do Two Rivers Matters. It drives why I go to these things. And and it, and it has come up so many times in conversation. I am sick beyond belief of the rift that exists, in my opinion, between our city leaders mostly and some of the residents. When I say, well, if somebody complains to me about something, have you, have you contacted the city council about that? Have you called the city about that? And the answer I get, and this is a quote and it happens all the time, that's why bother. I hate that. I hate hearing that. And I, and I don't think either side wants that. I think that we want to connect that back together. So that is really why I'm running. I want the city to kind of mend that aspect, to remember that the whole purpose. I mean, this is a poly-side one-on-one. The whole purpose of city government is to represent the people that live in this town. That is what it's for and I want that back. And I think both sides probably do too, to some degree, but there's gonna be some pain we gotta get through. Communication to me is super critical. We have to communicate proactively as a city, not wait for them to show up on the podium. Because some people don't like public speaking. We need to go out. That's why the town hall listening session thing was so important. That's why we want to go out and, and get on social media, be on Facebook. We just need to help bridge that gap so that the residents have a little bit bigger say in what's going on. And lastly, um, I want to be able to see that the city council members that get elected, they are prepared when they show up, they've read it ahead of time, they've researched ahead of time, and they can debate and not all vote yes around. I want to see some differences.
Um, again, my name's Timothy Tree. I've lived here my whole life. I decided to run for council because I figured council needed somebody on it that would say that is a very smart word and ask questions about stuff to try and figure out what's going on so that I could relay that to people so that they knew what was going on. Um, I don't fit in with a, a lot of what you would probably look at as a normal council member, because I am the kind of person that would say that's dumb or something like that, but sometimes I need to be sad. And, but I listen. I can have a different opinion with someone else than we can sit and talk about it and, you know, we can overlap on each other. It's, it's compromising. We learn from each other. It's, um, you have to communicate and the polls or the, uh, not poll, but, uh, surveys, yes, those are great. And I've lived here my whole life and I didn't know that they had them with the, uh, the city plans and stuff. We need to get that advertised so that everybody knows where it's, so everybody can write in what they want, the direction of what's in the people. And if you go on the website, you can find all kinds of stuff that a person that I know is there. And that's why city is going that direction because I'm a total people that way. And so they weren't doing anything wrong. They were doing it right, but it just didn't happen enough, after two cents in there. And you gotta get everybody's sense.
Thank you all for coming. First of all, uh, I appreciate all the questions. Uh, my name's Scott Sekmesser. Uh, I am running for reelection for city council. Um, I'm doing it for many things, not just for one thing. Um, I'm doing it because I love the city. Um, this is my home. This is where I lived all my life, pretty much. Um, I, we moved here when I was four or five and been here ever since. Um, not going anywhere. Plan to stay here for the rest of my life. Um, the people of the Two Rivers, that is what the most important part of this is for me, is doing, is representing you what you want. Um, and I know people say, well, you don't listen to this person, you don't listen to that. Again, like I said before, there's so many different groups of people that you can't talk to everyone. And my wife will tell you, I talk to way too many people, um, when I run into people up on the street. So I appreciate everyone that do give us comments, that do talk to us. For me, it's important. Um, it's important to have city involved, city resident involvement, um, talking to us, talking to department heads, talking to people that work here, that live here. It's really important for me to be able to have that, that sense of community. That is what I was trying to get to. It's that sense of community that everyone just, you don't have to get along with everyone, but it's just important that everyone wants to do what's best. Um, we're sitting up here, the rest of the council members, the city staff, they, they don't want to wreck the city. They want to make the city the best that, that it can be. And that is what we're really trying to do. Um, so it's, it's important for, for all of you to be here. It's all important for all your questions and, um, yeah, I'm doing it for myself to be able to represent you, to be able to fight for you. I'm doing it for the people of Two Rivers. I'm doing it for people that come here and hopefully they can stay here, um, and, and all that stuff too. So again, thank you very much. And, um, again, my name is Scott Sekmesser. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all the candidates for all, for answering all the questions. I want to thank the audience. All of you behaved beautifully. Um, you had the respect and diplomacy that I was hoping for in a crowd such as this, so I certainly appreciate that. Uh, I just want to thank the Park District again for having this facility. Remember, you can watch this on YouTube. Uh, your exit ballots are going out March eighteenth. Uh, you can walk in and vote March eighteenth at City Hall. And this is part of being a league member. And to, and just make sure you have your driver's license and, uh, proof of presidency. Uh, if you have any problems, there's little cards where you can go online to see if you're registered or not, where your, uh, voting place is. I, I, you know, if you want to know, you go to myhope.wisconsin.gov and your name will pop up, your residency will come out, and you can find out what's on your ballot, um, who's, who's on your ballot besides our candidates tonight. But there's other things and, uh, but you can also find out where you need to vote, you know, where you can vote and voting hours, whatever. Anyway, thank you again. I appreciate you all.